All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, let's stand for the pledge. Aye.
(inaudible)
Thank you.
Alright, tonight's meeting is a report from our external auditors.
That's alright, I'll try to squeeze everything in.
Jennifer, you may need to bring your microphone closer to.
Susan, is this yours?
Yes.
Good evening. I did meet with the audit committee in to discuss in detail the full financial statements as well as the communication letters. Just some of the financial highlights that we did speak about. There were no new Gatsby statements, so we didn't have any new auditing standards that we had to implement. We did discuss the impact of year two for the Gatsby sixty-eight statement, which is your ERS and TRS retirement system plans. So those plans hire their own actuaries and provided to the district their proportionate share to put on the district-wide financial statements. So that's when we take the fund-level financial statements and convert those into our accrual-based accounting, which is your district-wide financial statements. It has all your long-term assets as well as all your long-term liabilities on the district-wide financial statements. So for the impact of year two, your net pension asset is your TRS because that plan is over a hundred percent funded. However, it did decrease in year two for the current year by nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, and that's because that plan is at a hundred and ten point forty-six percent funded. First last year was at a hundred and eleven point forty-eight percent funded. For the ERS, you have a net pension liability because that retirement system plan is not a hundred percent funded. So this year it did increase the liability of one point five million, and that's because prior year was at ninety-seven point ninety-five percent funded, that plan itself. This year it's at ninety point sixty-eight percent funded. And that plan did change some of their assumptions, their interest rates, so that's why there was an increase in that liability. Overall, we did discuss some of the fund balance and the reserves, talking about how you're at the four percent, so you are within the legal limit of the law. The reserves, you are utilizing and also funding those reserves, and that's what we like to see, that you do have a long-term plan. And I know the district's in the process of implementing their plan for the future years as well. Overall, it was a healthy balance sheet, I was very happy to see that. So you did have a great bond rating because you just issued serial bonds, and you will be issuing more serial bonds in sixteen, seventeen. We did issue an unmodified opinion, which is, in auditors' terms, a clean opinion, which is the best opinion you can have. We had no material weaknesses. We did have one recommendation with the extra classroom activity funds, and that was with just some of the activity, just looking at those, make sure that it has financial activity within those clubs. And then also with the graduating clubs, to make sure that those students do vote on what they want to do with those funds before they do graduate at the end of the year, because they shouldn't have a rolling balance after they graduate.
If they don't vote on it, what happens to their, to the balance of that money?
Then we would have to go to the board policy and see what your board policy states, whether it goes to the student council or, you know, which student council it goes to.
Jennifer, do you just want to verify that for us?
Yes, so at the end of the year, if the students in that class do not designate that those funds go to any other, either funds or any other activity account, then the funds do get transferred as per SED guidelines to the student council account. I'm not a hundred percent sure if there is an allocation made for middle school and high school, I have to double-check on that. But I do know, like, the interest that gets accumulated in the account, we do accrue the interest to the student council each month. One fund gets the interest, middle school gets the interest the next month, the high school gets the interest. But I'm not completely sure about how the class funds are divvied between the two student council accounts. But by law, by SED guidelines, they, that's where they end up, in one of the student council accounts.
So i- i- if we wanted to change the policy, and if the graduating class didn't elect to do something, could we roll it into the sixth grade incoming to start there?
The only way, the only people, if, other than going to a student council account, the students of that class would have to vote on where those funds go.
Got it.
So if they wanted it to go to the next class, they could definitely designate that those funds go there. We just need documentation that the vote happened and that there was, and that it was handled correctly at the end of the year. So if, but if the vote never happens, then it ends up in the student council account.
In other words, it has to be disseminated amongst all the children equally, unless the students of that class have voted and have exerted their will. Because they've, if you're thinking in terms of they've, they did the-
They raised the money, yes.
They raised the money, they should determine. And they can do tremendous goodwill, they can make, they can vote to put into scholarship, they can vote. If you look at school districts, and I, we have it here, where they've, they've made a flagpole, or they've done an existing bench or memorial, so that twenty years they come back for their class reunion, they can still see that, something that they've added that is a testimonial to their class, and they come back and see it year after year, and, you know, they've added to the infrastructure of the school, which is beautiful. Or add to the sixth grade class coming in, but everybody has to agree.
Well, because they have zero, right, yeah.
But they have to agree.
Jeff?
Yeah, I think student council is actually a good choice, because often when there's a situation that requires financial assistance, student council is the entity that we go to. So let's say there's a student who has financial difficulty, his or her family can't go on the eighth-grade Washington trip. We'll often appeal to student council, who will then sponsor somebody. So the funds, whatever is left over going into student council is probably not a bad thing, because often they're voting on some issues that are probably more congruent with their age, high school versus sixth grade, for instance.
And it's disseminated amongst all the children, which is, I think, the thoughtfulness behind that.
So is there a middle school and high school student council?
There is. So I'm just not sure what the policy says, whether or not each club gets a percentage, or if the high school just gets the full amount. It could be that the high school gets the full amount left over at the end of the year, I'd have to check the policy and see how that's handled. But I think for the past, at least since the time I've been here, the monies have always gone to the student council, they've reverted back to the student council, they've never voted to use those funds in any other way, so.
So in other words, whatever's left from the class of twenty sixteen will go now according to the policy in place, because they didn't do anything with their money?
Yes, and then from there, the student council will have to vote on how those funds are spent, once it's deposited into their account.
And more often than not, those monies should be pretty much depleted at the end of the day, because those funds are often used to offset the cost of the prom or some end-of-the-high-school career activities.
But they weren't in this case, they made a healthy balance. I just have-
Yeah, I don't know if that's public, but they got a tremendous amount of money.
Right now.
It's now. Twelve thousand dollars.
I just have a-
It's public, twelve thousand six hundred and six dollars.
Only because they're crazy, they should have offset.
I haven't gone back and looked at the records, but what would be interesting to see is how much of those funds that were left over were fundraised by that class, and how much of the funds left over were funds that were given to that class by previous classes that had not exhausted the monies they had, or other co-curricular accounts that were closed out and the funds then directed to student council. That would take, maybe that's been done, but I suspect that's probably what happened.
Yeah, we have not had a lot of, we have not had a lot of funds transferred to graduating classes in the past. So I think, I could definitely do that analysis to see the source of the funds. But going forward, we definitely would encourage all of the advisors or the advisor of the high school class to really at the, towards the end of the year, close to the graduation, have their student body vote on how the funds should be spent.
I just ask for a policy clarification. I've heard two different things, one that, that, where this money goes and how it's determined is determined by board policy, but I also thought I heard that it's had something to do with state law, so can you just clarify?
State aid has a book, it's a handbook, and it's just guidance on how extra classroom funds are counted for. And as part of one of the regulations or guidance documents, it basically states that any money left over in a class account should be transferred to the student council. I just don't think it actually states whether it's middle school student council or high school student council. So I'm not, I'm not completely sure if our policy directs it to go one way or the other. I would, I think it probably all ends up the high school, but I just don't want to say until I know for sure.
Okay, so our policy just follows that guideline? Alright, that's what I just wanted to understand that.
And they don't allocate it elsewhere themselves?
Right, I understand, okay, thank you.
I mean, that's a lot of Christmas wreaths. Well, they're selling Christmas wreaths right now, to fund accounts, okay, got it.
Okay, so like I said, we don't have any material weaknesses. We did have one management letter comment that was just for the current year findings. There were three management letter comments that, from the prior year, and they've all have been implemented. So I just wanted to thank Jennifer Christine and the entire business office for implementing our recommendations as well as providing us with all the audit documentation needed to complete the audit in a timely fashion. So thank you. And if there's any questions.
Well, one of the things that may come up when the public looks through this is that we have funded our liability, and our thought, Jennifer, did you just bring the thought behind that, on the funding of that? Because I think that's important, because we are-
The OPEB, the Gatsby forty-five?
No, no, the, our, when we-
To reserve for insurance.
For our reserve for insurance, right.
Oh, the insurance reserve, yeah. So we, this year, so fifteen, sixteen, we actually used some of the funds allocated in our ERS reserve, our retirement reserve, and then we also used funds out of our repair reserve. But at the end of the year, we did have surplus funds available, and we were able to replenish our repair reserve. So our repair reserve now does have a healthy balance in it, it's about seven hundred and fifty-two thousand. And then we were also able to put aside a lot of those funds into our insurance reserve, which is really a wonderful reserve that we have now. It basically will cover any liability or claim that is not covered by our current insurance, and there are things out there that our current insurance will not cover. And we can also use it to pay professional service providers, legal fees, those type of things related to those claims. And really, it's just nice, it's just, we have a little more of a comfort level now, knowing that we have extra money set aside for insurance reserve for any sort of, for those types of purposes.
Because I know everyone was concerned when we were moving forward with Stellamaris, and, you know, anything that might come up as far as the insurance concerns that surrounded that. And so that gives us that buffer, and I think that's really smart, district-wide, you know, and it was, and that just gives us that much more protection, so I just wanted to remark on that. Because, you know, when our public looks at all of this, and they question all of it, so it's nice to make a comment on it.
Well, I think a couple of meetings ago, it was, Maria Miller had mentioned that when she was on the board, eons ago, there was like sixty thousand dollars in fund balance. And really, at that point, the district was in a bind, and the district was doing very badly, you know, the financial condition was not good. And just that turnaround within a couple of years, because of the board and because of administration and everyone involved, I mean, it's unbelievable that our financial condition has improved so much over those years. And it really is just, you know, credit to everyone who's been working here and, you know, sitting at this table through every budget process for that. Because I think you were here, right, when the fund balance was extremely low?
Yeah, no, it definitely turned around.
It's unbelievable.
And as we were talking about, actually in the audit committee, how I was saying I do have districts that are not even at the two percent, and they're withdrawing down on their reserves. And you get too nervous because you have to think long-term, how are you going to survive all, you know, especially with the tax cap, and you have all these, you know, fluctuations in TRS, ERS reserves, your health insurance. So you have so many variables that, state aid, so you really want to make sure that you do have a healthy balance sheet going forward.
Right.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Alright, I would like to, I don't have it on the agenda, but I would like to just get some guidance from the board. I had heard bits and pieces from several board members here and there about-
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know if I was on-
That was all good news, I appreciate it.
I had just gotten bits and pieces of suggestions, a little bit from different board members, about how to structure the conversation around committees. And so I thought, since we're here and we're in open session, if I could just get some thoughts from you about whether you want to do a community workshop, or you want to just have a conversation with just the board, or just for the administrators, and how you envision, several board members had said to me that they want a more robust conversation about committees, and so to help everybody kind of prepare for that conversation, I'd just like to get some feedback from the board on how you want to structure that conversation. Do you mind if we just started this then, Susan?
Okay, well, I think it keeps popping up, and it's been popping up for a while, about how the committees can be most effective. I understand that they are intended to be board committees, but I don't get the sense that we've been very strategic and deliberate about what we need from them. So I think I would personally like to see sort of a conversation that kind of is the thirty thousand feet level, you know, that looks at what their role is, how can they be most efficient in communications? In other words, what is the procedure going to be for us to come up with items that we would like the committee to explore and come back to us with recommendations? Are we going to encourage them also to come up with their own things that come back to us? So it's a two-way street, and another vehicle for the public to give us feedback and weigh in. The role of board members on the committees. Yes, there are board committees, but there's been some discussion I've heard in the community in the past, you know, that maybe board members shouldn't be on those committees, and they should operate, and what have you. Maybe board members are just liaisons to them. I don't know. So I think that was some of the things that have popped up, and I know Chris has raised a lot of items.
And I'll make sure I circle back with her this week.
Oh, and then the charters and the history, and also getting feedback from the administrators. And, you know, personally, I think while this is sort of a board discussion and a goals and a direction, I still would love us to invite the community to weigh in and give us feedback and their thoughts about what would they like to see out of the committees. Oh, and that was the other thing I was thinking, you know, we restart them every year, and this year, we've all acknowledged that they're starting late. So given the fact that the administrators run them, maybe it's something to talk about, that they wouldn't just be on a yearly cycle, but maybe bi-annual, maybe a three-year thing, so that they can get to work and really do stuff and keep going and not lose time every time they're revoted on, and new members and what have you. So, you know, I don't know, this is just some of the things that I've heard, and it would be helpful for the board to have those conversations.
So, um-
Is that enough things?
No, it's good, no, it's good, because I'm, I'm just thinking, like, if I'm going to, if I'm going to structure that conversation, then it might be like for each one of those items, everybody on the board would need to weigh in, and then we might have the community weigh in as well. So that might be more of an, more of an open dialogue with community. Okay, Stephanie, how do you envision that conversation being structured?
You know, I, I don't know, I have a hard time with it, because I think that administrators should lead them. I think board members on them restrict the conversation. But I do think a parent on them has to be self-appointed to come to a monthly meeting and report back, and not, maybe not an administrator, so that there's two-way communication. And I don't know how you structure that. You're going to have to go down every point, I think, is the only way to do it.
Like, one at a time, and just like, do we want to change the policy? Because I think a lot of this stuff is governed by charters, which would take board action.
Well-
Like a rewrite and a read and a board act, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's hard for me to, you know, in the communications committee that I've been on, so I can speak to it, Scott does an extremely efficient job of communicating. We have our dates for the year, we know what the goals are from the community in. He lets it be directed by parent involvement, and then he reports back. Now, I don't know if that works on all the other ones. Maybe because the communications committee, the hot topic last year was fix the website, and we accomplished that task, so maybe the noise around it is less than on another committee that I'm not aware of. Athletic committee, I'm sorry, do I have a date, do we know when it's, no, right?
No.
Okay, yeah, that's another thing, we really should keep it going. I mean, I know it's hard during the summer, but we're sitting here, and it's almost like you lose momentum, you forget where you were.
Yeah, and I remember feeling that same anxiety in June, realizing like, if we don't get this done now, we're going to lose six months. You know, like, I remember knowing that that was going to happen if we don't tie things up in a bow at the end of the academic year.
And notes taken at these meetings?
Yeah, and they, and they post them within two weeks, so you have, they have posted them.
So if I wanted to go back and look at the last educational facilities planning committee meeting?
They're perfect, they're all-
They would be there.
They're, oh my god, they're perfect, yeah.
I know it's you, I mean, I'm not, I am just trying to, you know.
And same with, like, policy, but we worked so hard this year.
So you're envisioning, like, let's, let's make bullet points of issues and then just go through them one by one, right?
I kind of think so, I mean, I mean, we've had our own discussion on how long someone can serve, and some of the charters say two years, some of them say four, some of them say if nobody else steps up, you could keep going. I, I almost feel like you got to revisit the charters.
Okay. Tommy John, what are your thoughts?
I think our guy, well, our guiding document on this is, is the policy, the board policy that we have. And whereas the charters are important, we may need to go to the charters and do something with our policy. Because the policy, and I'm looking at it here, it says, "The board, the board and the president may at its discretion establish committees for the purpose of undertaking specific tasks in connection to board activity." That's the first line of the policy. Now, we probably, with some of the suggestions, we probably need to work on our policy as a, as an important first step, because the committees are incredibly important. They do a lot of the work of the board as far as flushing out information and getting a sense of the community, and it's a great way to, to get people involved in the school and the decision-making process. I think it's important for the board. So I really think that we need to start with the policies. Maybe we look at some other school policies, is this something that the policy committee looked at specifically? I don't know.
We, we didn't, we did not, we did not. We were, we were running with what you had established, but I have to tell you, it hangs up what you're talking about. Like, I couldn't start the policy committee until the board approved what we, our committee, and our board didn't do the approval for real, we were busy, we were busy all summer. So we didn't get to that point, but then the policy committee couldn't begin our work, and so we're a little backed up.
Okay, but I have, can I just add something to what you're just saying? Because when did we ever have a conversation about what the assignments were going to be for the committee? I mean, you just read the first sentence of the policy, "We are not following our own policy." And it just seems like the committees stay out there and they float and they're there, but where is the strategic direction? Where is the deliberate consideration of what is needed to improve in these areas? And then saying to communications, you know, like, what was done before on the website, but what about for now?
Can I think I can answer them?
Go.
The administrators that run the committees are taking it from our goals for the year.
And, and they report out at every, at every board meeting, they report out what they're working on. So that, at the business meetings, there's a committee reports, which we haven't had yet because they haven't met yet. So they report out what they're working on at every meeting. And mine are pretty, I run policy, and policy is pretty easy. We, we had a complete audit of every single policy, and we have to bring those rapidly up to New York's, to our, to New York State laws. So we did, we started with business, which were about money and financials rapidly, and then we hit the high boilerplate ones at the end of the year. And now I think we have to work on board policy, so.
Well, we would have to, this is, this is, you know, this holds the weight of local law. And I really like the idea of a, of a two-year cycle, maybe we could stagger membership, you know, to keep the thing going, maybe through the summer, and set it up that way as far as continuing the work. But now, it kind of begs the question, you know, if we're not giving these committees assignments according to our policy, should they be running? And I think yes, and I think board members have indicated that it should be a two-way street as far as communication goes, you know, that kind of-
But I think most of them have, not to, like, for example, communications you just talked about, our, one of our goals for the school district was to improve the website. So that got thrown to the communication committee, so I think they all are tied into our school goals. But I don't know if it's, like, directly listed.
I don't know if it's, it's, it was clear to me, because I ran a whole cycle, that the district goals, as it pertained to the communications committee, became Scott's marching orders to lead the committee. So that one I saw work beautifully, I, but I can't, that's the only one I went to.
Tommy John, are you done with your?
That's appropriate, I think that worked well, yeah. I mean, it was a district goal, and we got the website up and running.
Do you have other thoughts about how to structure the conversation?
No, but I, I think we really have to, you know, look at our policy when we're doing this, because of what we're talking about, as far as I'm concerned.
But do we look at the policy and then the individual charters at the same time? I think that's-
Well, I, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing is that it might be, do we want to do some things universally? And then also, we should think about what tasks the committees, like, separate, we should look at the separate committees. Sandy, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I'll weigh in. First of all, I know that this is a really important topic for Chris, and she was actually going to write something to have you read, but when we realized it wasn't on the agenda, she didn't. So a little uncomfortable having the conversation with the board, not knowing that we're going to have it, because I know that Chris had some specifics she really wanted to discuss. So I just want to put that out there, that I know that she has some definite issues with the committees. I personally think that the Board of Education should take the, the charters and align them across the board immediately. I wouldn't wait a week or a day, get them out, align them, just like we do everything else. If you're going to play a game, you have to know the rules, and you can't change the rules to suit a committee. So that's number one. Number two, I've been on many different committees, and again, it is often goal-oriented, but at times it's not, it depends on the committee, i.e. athletics. There is most likely nothing in athletics as a gold. But when we came to the board, we said, you know, Eric came the first year and said, or Don, they said, "What do you want to talk about?" And it was academic eligibility. So we spent a very significant amount of time comparing other schools, making sure that we were being fair, making sure we were being inclusive, not exclusive to children. We worked on it for a year, brought it to the board, it was adopted. Last year, there was challenges with the end-of-the-year celebration. It was a big upheaval from the year before, we took that on, discussing scholarship athletes, I mean, scholarship, I'm sorry, good sportsmanship awards for teams, banners, vice versa. So that really doesn't ever align with goals, and that's more of an ad hoc committee. I've been on nutrition and wellness forever, it's always going to be a board goal, that's why I think goals are kind of, I won't say what I really think about them, but it's like, you tell me a school district doesn't want your kids to be healthy, is, you know, and eat good food and whatever, but last year, out of blue, we decided- and, and eat good food and whatever, but last year, out of blue, we decided to rewrite the policy, that was the fourth policy. So that, I don't even know if that policy's even been adopted yet. So I feel like committees sometimes do, I understand what Stephanie's saying, they kinda get a hamster on a wheel and they spin and spin and spin. But if you take them one by one, and you have the discussion of the board member that's on it to bring it to the committee as a group, I don't think a board member has ever walked into a committee and said, "Okay, this is what we wanna discuss, and this is it." It's always been a open conversation, it's been collaboratively, um, with the administrator and the Board of Education member brought back to the board. I have reported, as have my administrators, on goals, so it's never been one versus the other.
I, I just wanted to find them.
Okay, I don't know, anyway, I just lost my train of thought, so, there you go, I'm good. I don't know where I was, so.
I'm looking, I'm, I wanna know whether, no, I'm sorry, 'cause if I can't find it, then I, I, I just-
Sandy, do you imagine, hang on a second?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any chance you guys can do that at another time?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, do you imagine it being like an open workshop type of thing, or?
Well, that's, the, the committees that I'm on, that I have been on myself, that's the way it usually is. And we brainstorm and we decide what the, you know, three topics are and we try to come.
But like, when, as far as like, um, I know that some board members would like to see some changes, that conversation, um, which would be at a, at, at an upcoming board meeting, would it be like an open workshop where the community can, um, weigh in at any time? Or would it be like, just at a regular structured board meeting? Do you have a preference in thoughts, Scott?
Uh, no, I, no, 'cause I'm a little confused on what you're asking me.
Um, so, uh, Susan just gave me a laundry list of things that she would like, basically, the will of the board. Can we change this, can we change this, can we change this?
I also agree that it shouldn't stop either. I've, 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 I've expressed that many times, that come May, the committees are over, 'cause you don't do Christmas, 'cause it's the holidays, and then May comes, and we got the IB, and then we got June, and then July, August, we're sitting here in November.
Testing in April.
I can honestly say that Mike Guinan has done an amazing job with the Wall of Honor. It has been at a phone call every month, if we can't get together, we do conference calls. So we all call in, we do a conference call, so we have not stopped, and we're actually adding in two more members to that, that way. So the Wall of Honor Committee has continued. Whether I was on or not, we just kept it going until I was reappointed. So I do agree in that philosophy by the rest of the board also.
Um, I guess my question was more to, um, I know that-
I think she's talking about whether, do, when we have Tracy here, when we have Chris here, um, do we workshop this? Or do, do you, does the board just kinda-
Do I just like go down, like, number one, yes or no, people, number two, yes or no, people?
Well, I mean, yeah, that's fine, but I, you know, I think you, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta start meeting. I mean, you get, this is like, I mean, I think we're tying hands at this point. I don't know what, what, what we need to, I don't know. Like, I don't know.
I, it might be too late to implement, I, I know Sandy's saying, you know, it would be nice if we revised them yesterday.
The charters should be changed, they should be, they should be aligned.
But I don't think we could stop the meeting s- right now to do it.
No.
I think we need to-
I'm not suggesting, no, 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 I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, and I think when, when, you know, when this issue came up in August, and was one of several times that Chris talked about it, my recollection was around this table that the compromise we all came to was that the committees would move ahead. It was, we would sort of have this short-term and long-term program.
Yep, yeah.
So let the committees continue to move forward, but, you know, Chris is right, and I think we all agree that we need to have this conversation, address some of these issues.
Right.
We can sort it out, and then maybe that can be implemented starting, you know, in, yeah, next year.
Yeah, and, and I, I recall the same thing, I remember Teresa saying, like, we'll get the committees going and let them continue to work while we grapple with this laundry list of, of issues. So I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get some guidance from the board on how to structure that conversation. Um, at this time, I'd like to invite any of the administration to weigh in. If you feel, um, any thoughts on committees, I know that you guys have been on committees in this district for longer than I've been on the board. So, um, any input you have, which I, I'd really, really appreciate.
I would just say that, at least in some, many of the committees-
Jeff, can you pull the microphone close, close to you, please?
So I know that in leading some of the committees over the years, it's often helpful at the beginning of the session to give the members input into what it is that they wanna address. So if it's already decided what the committee's going to address, um, prior to the first meeting, then I think that some of the committee members are not as apt to buy into the process.
Can, can you rephrase that?
Yeah, you're right. I agree, I know what you're saying, you're right.
So basically, when, when you have, um, like, a shared decision-making team, which is a committee, one of the first things we, I do in my role as chairperson is to ask the committee, uh, what their i- ideas are for what the committee should address over the course of a year. And that's a brainstorming session, and I think it's the role of the chairperson to facilitate that discussion. And I think it, it is counterproductive in some ways, um, not always, but in some ways, to already have it decided prior to the first meeting, what it is that the committee's charge is going to be in terms of what they're addressing. Because then the people on the committee don't have input into what-
Into what the committee does.
They're gonna be doing.
True, thank you.
Yep.
But I think that's part of the two-way street issue that we've talked about. I think, I think that I get the sense there is agreement, but I know Chris has said, I, I don't know, I feel like I keep talking for Chris.
I, I know, well, well, she would've had some, I know that we had the discussion, 'cause she was-
Yeah.
-gonna drop it off.
Well, and, and the-
'Cause you were away.
But she's one of the ones who says, you know, these are supposed to be board committees, you know, what is the, what are we-
Board's vision.
Assigning them, yeah, exactly. So I, I just, and, and just also, I just wanna clarify, those laundry list of things that I mentioned, not, they're not necessarily things that I want, they're just things that I have heard raised-
Right.
-in either on, as, this board or in the community, so I just think they're things that should be discussed.
Well, and I, I just wanna clarify that, um, that there, there was some, some discussion amongst the board to have this be that robust conversation where we solve these problems. Um, and I was just a little bit concerned about, um, length of time, um, and structure of that conversation, and whether it should be a whole workshop with the, um, audit, um, being at the same time, if we wanted to advertise it to the public and have them weigh in, like, all these sorts of things, I just felt like I couldn't do in such short order. So thi- this is in no way supposed to substitute, um, for solving these p- or addressing the charter. I just, I just wanted to get some guidance, because it sounds like, um, we can do some work ahead of time as far as letting people reflect and think about, um, some of these questions and issues, so that if, when we are ready to weigh in, this is how I feel about this, that, or the other, that we've had time to reflect and think about it and-
And, and I wonder, you know, um, Sandy, I think you're right, and when you talk about sort of aligning all the committee charters, and I know we've talked about that in other areas of, of the work, but one of the things that I wonder too is, you know, when we come up with sort of a singular policy or whatever, it might not fit everybody, so I don't know, I mean, and, and I agree with you, they should, you know, or maybe there are certain things that need to be standardized, yeah.
It's not gonna fit everybody, but you, you gotta have some type of standardization.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I mean, we can't be all over the place.
I agree, I agree.
Um, are there any other administrators who'd like to weigh in on, um, the way, the way we will structure the next conversation around policies? Because I think that, um, at that time, I'll be looking for a lot of, of input from the administration, so if you wanna help me.
I guess, um, just one of the thoughts that I'd add, based on the conversations that we've had recently, but also in, in the past, is I think, um, kind of to Jeff's point, and some of the points raised by board members, there's that two-way street that's really important to provide the members of the community an opportunity to bring up ideas. And I think that the committees offer that as a good opportunity when they're running well. But there, there's that piece of, um, doing the important and sometimes time-consuming work for the Board of Ed, where, um, you may wanna just, and this may be noted in the policy, but that, um, provision of like ad hoc committees, when, when items come up and maybe they don't, maybe they don't fit a specific committee that's already established, but they're very important and also timely, and you also would probably get, um, a lot of community members to kinda jump on board for a committee that lasts for a short duration, addresses an issue, researches it, and presents that, um, those findings back to the board. I think that could serve as well.
Okay. Anybody else wanna weigh in?
One thing the board may wanna consider if they're having this is to invite some of the, we have some really, um, the Native Americans talk about the turtle as being the memory keeper, you know, because they have the thirteen parts to their shell that hold on to the memories, is to have in the audience, some of our, for public input, some of our folks that have been on the committees and have some thoughts on how committees operate. I, you know, this is only my third year here, um, and, you know, I've worked on committees for almost thirty years now, but every community has their culture, and I've been very lucky that, you know, the committee operations that I've seen have, have for my, my, you know, it's my third year here, have worked well. I mean, they've gotten a lot of work done, and, um, so, you know, they've gone through, they've gotten the work done, they've gotten busy, so. If, from my reflection, that's what I wanna see, I wanna see work getting done. So I think that, um, you may wanna get their feedback on, on what, where the noise is, like, where is, where is the concerns? Because my policy committees are like watching paint dry. It is really, really painful. Matt sat on that committee with me, and it was, oh, it is just so, it's the law of your district is the policy committee. And it's you, you know, and Jeff came in, and Mike Guinan came in to do some work, and they had to look at all these policies from other school districts and how they work and mesh them together, and then you guys have to read them X number of times, and, oh, but they sit there and they do the work. So we just wanna make sure to honor those people that come in and do that, that painful work, and not, um, necessarily fix something that's not broken in some of these cases. And the second thing I wanna say is, when we do policy, it's so that it outlives all of us. So we have a policy that outlives all of us, and we have charters that outlive all of us. So we wanna make sure that, 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 you know, we come and go, and that those things go on to outlive us, and that they become authentic documents. So that even if we're starting the conversation in November or December, that we make it a good conversation that outlives all of us, so that these committees continue to do good work. 'Cause I saw a lot of good work over the last two years.
All right, um, so I have some, some ideas and some thoughts, but as I, when it comes time to set the agenda for that particular meeting, if you have any other, um, feedback of how to structure that meeting, I'd really appreciate it, um, as, as we start to plan that, because I do want that to be a successful meeting, 'cause I know that it's been, um, on everybody's radar. Um, is there anything else that any of the board members would like to bring up?
Oh, yes, I believe there was, uh, a discussion about having an update about the, uh, what we discussed at the last executive session. So if that could be shared.
Yeah, um, we had our attorney, um, uh, come and give us an update on where we are in the process for Stellamaris. We are still, we are, we have not completed the closing yet. Um, he was there, able to update us that, um, that, um, we are still working with technicalities for the closing. It is still in process. We are not looking at the, um, the closing for another few weeks. So, and we're working very cooperatively with the Catholic Church and their attorney, but it will, it has not happened yet. So that's where we are.
I, I just wanna point out, is I think it's helpful, since we get a lot of, um, pushback from the community about concern about the number of executive sessions and what is discussed and being transparent. I, I just wanna add that, um, that update was something that was agreed to by, uh, everybody on the board in that section, in that, uh, meeting, and that we asked the attorney, uh, how, how we could be as most transparent as possible with an update about, uh, the contents of that meeting. And, um, I really appreciated all my colleagues and everybody who was, uh, every single member of this board who was there, who said, uh, that they wanted us to be as transparent as possible, and I really appreciated that from my colleagues.
Could we talk about two happy things?
Sure.
Oh, good, all right. I know we're, we're gonna get out of here early, but this is really two happy things that happened. So I, Matt, I couldn't believe, um, morning program done his last day. I wish every taxpayer came, because it was the greatest thing. And then Friday, Eric's not here, and I know a thousand people helped Friday, but I could not believe, a hundred and ninety-three kids showed up for Family Fun Night Friday in the gym, and how excited those kids were with something to do in Sag Harbor. So I just wanna say thank you.
It was so cool, I got to, I got to experience it for a while, and it was just so cool to see the black lights, and all the kids had on, like, the black light neon, so they reflected, and they played black light volleyball. And I gotta tell ya, it was pretty cool, and they were having a lot of fun, and parents brought food, it was, it was a, it was a cool experience.
Just positive things, just great things, okay.
Well, while you're at it, why don't you add the third thing?
Wow.
The game that's happening right now.
That's why Eric and Mike Guinan are out here, Mike, Mike Guinan and Eric are at the game cheering on our, our team.
Two-two?
I don't know, it's twenty-one, twenty-four. It's game four.
And, and Chris is there too, 'cause her daughter is on-
Sandra's served, had a great serve.
Anything else?
Getting like moment, minute-to-minute updates here. It's crazy.
Um, public input too.
Come on, Greg.
Hi, I'm Greg Burton, uh, parent of two kids in, uh, the school. And, uh, I, uh, wrote something that made the, um, paper last week. And, uh, I'd just like to read it, just to have it on the record, because I think it's, uh, poignant, really important, and, uh, I think it helps us clarify, and hopefully will allow you to clarify issues with us, the public. The facts about the decision for artificial turf at Pearson. Before we get into the truth behind the turf decision we face on in December, we need to understand that the athletes' parents, coaches, and athletic staff, and the rest of the students in Pearson all agree that we need an artificial turf field. You need to know that. Any other vote will be against the needs and will of the actual people who will be using the field. Nonetheless, there are still some who are fighting the installation of the artificial turf field, even though it was already voted on and decided by a wide margin of our actual Sag Harbor population three years ago. Uh, there is no cost to you for artificial turf. Voting for the use of reserve funds for the field will not cost you a penny. The funds are already ve- available in building reserve fund. Cancer scares are removed from the decision because of the infill, that we've replaced with, uh, non-toxic infill. The board has reached a very intelligent solution in terms of the already-approved artificial turf field. Install an artificial turf field that doesn't use those potentially carcinogenic crumbs. Let's look at that. The component in arti- artificial turf that is potentially dangerous, part of the field that was potentially carcinogenic, was the infill, the crumbs in between the blades of synthetic grass. The board has voted to use alternate infills that are totally innocuous and totally safe for the environment, with zero carcinogens. Moreover, they have decided to use an infill that is about thirty-five degrees cooler than traditional infills when it's really hot outside. The environmental challenges have been removed. The artificial turf will be totally safe for our students. Those of us who were worried about carcinogens getting to our kids from artificial turf have no reason to vote against it now. But what's wrong with natural turf? It doesn't work for our school. It's wonderful to have nice, real grass out there, but it doesn't work for our school. Natural turf field behind Pearson will become a very limited-use field. There will be a wall, or a fence, or something to keep people off of the field almost all the time. It'll stop the use of the field for daily use of our, of our students and the community. So it seems ridiculous on that front. Out of all of our students, only two teams, soccer and field hockey, will be able to practice on it. But for serious field hockey competition, our girls still need artificial turf. So sixty kids out of the over six hundred students at Pearson will ever use the field, and only for one season. And when it rains, they won't be able to use it, which means that there'll be a lot less practice on that field, making our kids less prepared for competition. Every other student will be barred from its use, every other student will be barred from its use. That's really important. Every other student will be barred from its use. Every other student will be barred from its use. That's really important. Hundred days a year less use. Natural turf cannot be used when it rains or is too cold and it needs two months of total rest a year. You can actually plow, plow snow off of an artificial turf field, which means that it's usable at least 300 days a year. No baseball, no softball ever again in the back of Pearson. That's one of the most traditional sports here at Pearson. They will go away if we have a natural turf field back there. Forever. It's gone. Natural turf is also a money pit. Do you want more teachers or natural turf? You have your choice. And that's really important for the board. You have to decide, do you want personnel, people to teach our kids? Or do you want to have someone working on the field outside? That's your choice. Natural turf field will create over $100,000 a year or more, uh, or over a million dollars in on-budget costs, worrying about the 2% cap we're talking about, over the next 10 years. With cost caps of 2%, the school will have no limit or have to limit other personnel just to have this limited use field manicured by a superintendent of the turf and mowing care personnel. This means that we will have to limit spending on teachers and administrators, the people who teach your students, by up to $100,000 a year, excluding inflation. This is not a hard choice. Ecologically, natural turf stinks. Literally, it will stink back there. We will need to put down 5,000 to 10,000 pounds of, sorry? Oh, I just cut myself, give me a couple of seconds. Um, 5,000 to 10,000 pounds of fertilizer made out of bird feces every year on each of the two fields we've been keeping up. State law doesn't allow us to use pesticide or herbicide, both of which the experts all agree we will need to do to have a natural turf field. Our groundwater will be in jeopardy. The phosphates and nitrates from 10,000 pounds of fertilizer will seep down into the groundwater, threatening anyone who has well water. Each natural turf field needs 1 million gallons of water a year. Natural turf field will use 1 million gallons of water a year and we will have to water other fields more too, if we're going to use them. And that's all I have to say. How do I do?
Can I ask you a question?
Do you want to respond to that?
No.
I can't ask a question?
No, you can. I was, I asked her a question, so you said no, what's your, yeah, go ahead.
Well, to the gentleman at the stand.
Of course. I have no problem.
I'm asking the president. I mean, I just want to, I have a question about his background.
I'll allow it.
Okay. I, I mean, if, if you want to ask, do you have a professional background in artificial turf or installation or anything related to?
I'm in the sports field. I've been, I've been working, I've been playing sports for 40 years. I've been a professional in two sports. I, none, none of them has been a field sport though. Uh, but I've been in the sports.
Construction, the maintenance, installation of artificial turf fields?
I've been involved around, I've been around those people for the past 15 years, because my profession is sports. So I do have a great deal of experience, uh, with them. I've watched them. I know how professional they are. I know that they are honest, good people, and, um, they tell the truth. They're not going to make up stories. So I, more artificial turf fields get made out there. Um, they care as much about the environment and ecology as any of us does. And they also care, of course, a lot about the kids.
These are the people that you observed. I don't want.
Yeah, these are people. I've, I've, I've met about seven or eight different companies that do this.
The things that you're saying, you know, you're putting yourself out as an expert or something.
Tommy John.
I'll stop.
No, I do a lot of reading. I study. And I listen to the people who know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, but how do we handle when there are statements made in public input that are just flat-out false, such as statements that we approved a different infill that's completely safe, which is just not true? Um, and, and there were a number of other statements made, uh, just now at public input that are just not true. So how does that get addressed?
Um, well, I, I was going to make a statement for the board. Um, I, my understanding was that he was reading, um, an editorial that he had written for the paper, um, and he was reading that for us. So, um, he wanted to read that for us for the record, which, um, I value his input and his participation. Um, but I agree that there were some statements in there based that are not factual. And so I would just like to state for the record that there, um, that the statements that are made at public input too are his. Um, and that, um, we did not approve, uh, an infill that was safe. Um, and there is no evidence that the infill that is up for vote is safe. Um, and.
It's still a crumb rubber infill that's just coated by acrylic. So it's the same infill that was approved before, just with an additional plastic coating on it.
Correct.
So there's no evidence, for temperature only, it still doesn't necessarily bring it to safe temperatures. But no, there's no evidence whatsoever. And in fact, it still remains that the federal government's review of the research to date has not concluded and is not expected to be concluded until 2018. Correct? Okay, thank you. I just want clarification.
Um, yeah, the CDC actually said, um, that they didn't want to mislead the public and say that it was safe to play on.
Yeah, it was actually, I think it was the Consumer Product Safety Commission that just walked back and clarified its statement, which is very confusing, because they basically, yeah.
Which is why we get to vote tomorrow and we get to go vote again in December and the community can decide.
Yes, the community, that's what I was going to say. The community decides, not this board.
Exactly, exactly. All right. Any other items? Let's get a motion to adjourn.